I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for December 5th, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Beeter.
Paul, here. Little?
Here.
Schwart?
Here.
Treoka?
Here.
Leyland?
Here. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence as we reflect on our actions today? Thank you. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or amended?
So moved. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, same sign. Agenda's received. Public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? Is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, moving on to item three is our presentation for today. Cedar Valley Housing Corporation, a permanent housing program update. I know Mr. Ikas is going to be speaking for certain. I'm not sure who else. Please introduce your guests if you'd like.
Might be everybody.
That'd be great, too.
Good morning, Board. Tom Ikas with Blackhawk Grandi Mental Health Center. With me today on our board is Mary McKinnell from County Social Services, Ken Koltoff that used to be with the First Judicial District but decided that retirement was a better option, Ben Bruckstern from Friends of the Family. There were supposed to be some people on Zoom. I'm not sure if they're on or not. So, anyway, almost four years ago, a group of us got together. Actually, we've been discussing the needs of people in the criminal justice system with mental illnesses for years. I've been with Blackhawk Grandi for 35 years, and I think we've been discussing it for probably longer than I've been there. But we decided to form a nonprofit corporation with the unique name Cedar Valley Housing Corporation. I'm surprised it wasn't taken by other people. But, anyway, we formed a Board of Directors. We are a nonprofit corporation, and we started to put some meat around the bones of this ongoing issue, which seems to be getting worse, not better, in our community and in many communities across the United States. I don't know if they've got the PowerPoint up, Linda. I don't necessarily need to go through that.
Oh, that's all right. I think Al can help with that if he is there. He did say. Okay.
That would be great. Oh, I see Vicki Mueller from Pathways up in the Hollywood Squares, top right corner.
Okay, great.
Cool.
Just have to start it and then click through.
Sounds good. So briefly, and I don't want to take up a lot of time, this is...whoops, back. This is the project stakeholders. There are 15 people on the board right now representing a cross-section of the community that's been dealing with this issue for a long time. Our hopes, and with the support and the necessities, when we started looking at a proposed project for this population, we looked at a number of things that needed to be included in any type of program, which includes safety, security, housing, making it affordable with supportive services. So Eric Rittlin from Envision Architecture and his staff volunteered all their time to develop some drawings. We've envisioned a 24-bed, single occupancy facility down at the...at present, the old Alstead Langless Baking Company, which the city is in the process of purchasing and doing the environmental assessments. It's down by the Women's Facility for Chain. It's down by the food bank where Barb is at. It's down by Operation Threshold where the other Barb at in the Rath area. Single rooms on the top floor, and in the bottom floor, common space for agencies like us, Pathways, People's Clinic, Voke Rehab, you name it, that can have an onsite presence for the people that we are envisioning in this program. Some drawings. Eric's good at this stuff and his staff. Projected cost right now, which are always a moving target with the supply chain, is around $7 million. That does not include the operational cost of the program, but we'll need to revise everything when the final scope is determined. Why? We want to reduce the cost of incarcerations. Our prisons are busting at the seams, and last time I checked, can't help me, at least 50, 60% of the people in our prisons have serious mental illness. Sheriff Thompson's fond of saying that 60% of his inmates have a mental illness, so the population is there. Oh, there's Tony. Sorry. Not fond of saying. He says it. Says he's the biggest mental health provider in Blackhawk County, but biggest residential provider. So, safe, affordable housing is an ongoing need for people with disabilities in our community. Even though there seems to be a ton of building going on, our folks necessarily can't afford that type of stuff, so we're looking at people who have burnt bridges in the community for so many years that there's literally no place for them to go. They cycle through the shelters, the emergency rooms, Tony's jail, and unfortunately our prison system, and it's a revolving door that we've all heard about. We want to provide a permanent housing program for these people. We had originally envisioned transitional housing, get them in this facility for a while, get them back out in the community. But as Ben can attest to, many of the local, state, and federal funding sources talk more about permanent housing. So some people may stay in this type of program for a long time if it comes to fruition. We want to offer a lot of services to the people. As indicated here, Ken's former employer with corrections, many of these people will be on parole, probation, work release. We want to have classes, having people develop the daily skills that they would need if they choose to, or if we can develop a transition plan back into the community. Volunteer opportunities, mental health, substance abuse services, career vocational, you name it. We want to reduce incarcerations. We want to reduce the recidivism. We want to reduce the homelessness, and my understanding is there's been recent meetings downtown with business owners about some of the folks that are causing some issues, many of which probably have a mental illness and are probably some of Vicki's clients as well. And so that's just a brief PowerPoint on our proposed facility right now. Just wanted to give a board the update because, Linda, I believe you and Chris talked a couple of years ago about having the American Rescue Act funds available. I knew that the county had hired a consultant to look at things. We are nowhere near fundraising right now. We've been talking with a lot of folks, the city of Waterloo. We've met with the local foundations, various funders. Ben's tied into the Iowa Finance Authority, has met with them. He and Merrily Fisher from CHI are both involved in Samshe funding aspects. So we're putting together this jigsaw puzzle. There's a lot of pieces missing yet, but we wanted to give a board an update for the program because I think we mentioned it years ago. So questions for this group because I don't have all the answers?
Estimated timeline?
Pardon me?
Any type of estimated timeline or...
Ben, what was our last, when we talked last, in terms of when we might be ready to start applying for funding? Was it springtime?
I think our big hope is to be shovel-ready within the next couple of years. With our conversations with the Iowa...
Hopefully, over the next two to three years will be when we're able to kick this off. With our conversations with the Iowa Finance Authority, we know that there are dollars available there for construction. We also know that there is American Rescue Plan funds that are coming into the state of Iowa. IFA is just getting ready to release applications on those funds. A lot of it is going to be directed towards new construction. So being prepped and ready to go to get an application in will be very important during that time. You know, the hope is to be able to finance half of this project at least through Housing Trust Fund and IFA dollars if we can get kind of everything rolling. Right now, the biggest thing is how do we get rent paid, and it's trying to build a relationship with the Waterloo Housing Authority because this population absolutely is going to need rental assistance available to them. They're not capable of paying rent. We are talking about chronic homeless individuals who have been on the street for a long time, who have had mental illness, who have been in and out of the systems, that are going to need long-term treatment to help move them forward. This project will look like a project in Iowa City by Shelter House, which has been highly successful in helping their homeless population stabilize into permanent housing, and we hope to be able to bring that here in Blackhawk County.
Now, you mentioned new construction with this particular program or these programs that are out there, too. And yet you talked about, too, I know, Tom, that Alstead Langless building and the environmental assessment and stuff for the city. So that would, I assume, not qualify. So we'd be looking at something different, or would it be because we would take that building down and that was still the location and everything would still work there?
We've been working very closely with Noel Anderson, and the city has purchased that property. They're just in the process of the current owner moving the stuff out of the buildings, and they're doing the environmental assessments. Brian Shune from Interco is also on their board. They've already done a Phase One and a Phase Two assessment, so they're well on the way to have that ready to, ready-go when we're ready to go.
I know there were other locations you were considering at one point in time, but this seems like a good pit for the campus kind of area.
Yeah, we've been talking about a human service campus down there for as long as I've been around, so it's just one more piece of the puzzle. Plus, it's located close to the bus, to other services. Yeah.
How many individuals do you think you'll be able to serve every year or at a time?
I don't think we've even got to that point, Chris. I know this is a 24-bed facility, but Ben, you may have...
My guess is with 24 individuals, they're not going to probably be moving in and out of those units on a regular basis, right? You may have attrition of two to three over a year's time. But what we know is this community does not have enough permanent supportive housing in it to focus in on the population that this is set to achieve and work with.
As you work on permanent housing for folks, some folks, it might be that it's in this facility, and some folks, it might be that it's in an apartment or a home that you help them get into?
Yeah, this is going to complement some of the other services that are happening in this community, whether it's what Friends of the Family is doing with rapid rehousing and here locally to help individuals that maybe are not as high barrier as these individuals get into housing but have experienced homelessness, to Community Housing Initiatives, who has a 10-unit permanent supportive housing program, right? This will just continue to increase our permanent housing stock here in the Cedar Valley, which is something that is greatly needed because we just don't have enough to house those that are homeless right now.
It looks like in the renderings, all of these are single unit?
Yes.
Yes.
Was there at any point consideration of a couple of, you know, one or two units with more than one bed, thinking through that not all folks that are dealing with homelessness are single, right? They have kids. They've got...and just wondering if that was a part of the discussion in this process yet?
You know, these projects have worked better in other communities. When you start to work with single individuals to kind of stay within that population versus bringing families into that. Right now, in Blackhawk County, there's about 130 individuals on our prioritization list, in other words, that are waiting for homeless services. I would say 60 to 65% of that population is single individuals with about the remaining being family. So family is being served many times through a rapid rehousing program.
Okay.
Whereas this focus is really going to work with people who are, you know, when we house someone, especially an individual, we're struggling with landlords big time because they're going into an apartment or a unit, and something's happening. That landlord relationship is breaking down, and it's causing, there's damage within the unit. That stabilization is not occurring as much because there's only rapid rehousing, which is short-term assistance versus permanent supportive, which is much, much heavier intervention. Whereas with families, we don't have that issue as much with landlords. You know, it does happen, but it's not at that same level. And this really is truly designed to meet the needs of our chronic homeless population here locally.
And some of those people, I think, were unable to be served because of drug and alcohol abuse, and that was restricted, kind of restricting them from entering or staying.
Yeah, there are definitely programs that will restrict based on that. There will, these restrictions will not exist. We will be a housing-first program that starts with housing and then addresses the needs as individuals come into the housing program.
Does the Shelter House have, or maybe you don't even know, I'm not sure that's a fair question, but how many do they serve in their housing?
Boy, they've got 25 to 30 units down there that are single individuals, and I believe they are looking at new construction on another project down there because it has been highly successful. So that model is out there, and the success that they've had is there. You know, for me, I'm very close with the director there. She's done awesome work, and we just want to be able to replicate what's happened.
And those are new construction?
Yeah, they did new construction. Yep.
Was there consideration or discussion, or I would assume so, but of finding existing structure? And we're looking at a 5.5 million on construction cost, or 5.1 million on construction cost. Was there some consideration of, are there units available currently that, even if they needed rehab?
John Roof and John Miller, who most of you know, went on a road show maybe a year and a half ago and looked at all the city and county properties, and this kind of came to the top of the heap, given the fact that the city was trying to develop that Rath district down there. So we looked at other places, but this has the footprint that seems to work best for the type of facility we're looking at right now, Davis.
Okay.
And you mentioned a $7 million price tag. Is that from escalating costs that, from when you started planning to now, or just...
I think that includes Eric's most recent shot in the dark with the cost of materials and things.
Which will probably go up a little bit more.
I changed my mind.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, material costs would pretty much be right. Fixtures, soft costs, contingency, that's going to be there regardless of whether it's a new construction or if it's a rehab. But, you know.
I think, I mean, we've known what the need, it's been clear for a very long time, and the amount of recidivism we have seen in our jails. It's both, it's not sustainable, either morally or financially. And so we have to do something. We have to do something bold about this problem, and so I'd like to see the county commit at least $1 million to this project. And when that can come from a combination of reserves, it can come from opioid settlement money. There are a couple of different pots that we can come up with, but I think that it's a priority, and we should commit $1 million to this at least.
I know it has been something that's been very important, I think, and close to most of us as far as some type of assistance or working on that. So I understand exactly what you're thinking is, Chris, on this. Something for discussion, I guess, at some point in time in the future here. And maybe, I was going to say, too, as far as updates, I don't know how much is too much, or if there are things that, as they occur, that you feel newsworthy to us or something to bring forward, or...
Our board meets monthly, and we're in close contact with Noel, actually. Ben and Brian and I went down to meet with Noel last week to get an update on that property. So things are moving. I mean, for first two and a half years, we thought that this is worse than being stuck in mud. So, but it takes a while to generate the interest in the moment. We're doing this with all volunteer stuff, paid staff positions, so...
It does. It's just one of those things you'd like to...
Decision-making by consensus, as you guys...
There you go.
Yeah. Wanted to see it yesterday, and unfortunately, or years ago. It's just unfortunate. So, yes. Thank you very much for the presentation and update today and the comments. And is there any other questions? Or, yeah, we sure will.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to claims and payments. Resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
One more. Second?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $241,093.76. And the 60-40 fund, we are paying $5,063.56. And there really wasn't anything large or significant in that too much. We are paying for some, starting to pay for some construction design for the courthouse renovation for $44,500. Any questions from anyone?
These answers, your name is called.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwart?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Excuse me. Receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. This morning, I wanted to let you know about some bridge that, during a routine bridge inspection last week, it was decided to close it, and this is on Gibson Road between Eldor and Quarry. We are anticipating doing repairs. Our bridge crew is mobilizing out there today. The failure is, of course, a poor timber pile. We will be driving some new steel pile to support the structure, and then we will try and get this road reopened in about two to three weeks, weather permitting. So it is our intention to reopen it as soon as we can. This is on Gibson, like I said, between Eldor and Quarry. There's, this is a critical bridge, so we don't have any intention of closing it permanently as long as we're able to make these repairs successfully. So I need to let you know about that. And then other than that, a lot of work this coming week will be cutting brush in areas that are shading the roads. For example, in some of the ditches, a lot of tall trees can create shade, and so we are removing some of those in selected areas. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good morning, Board. Caitlin Emmerich with Public Health. I just have a couple of quick updates. Just wanted to share with the board that the deputy director position has been posted. We worked with Amanda and HR to get that job description updated, and it posted Friday. I'm very happy about that and looking forward to getting that filled. So just want to share the news and spread the word on that one. Also, we have two of our Board of Health members that are up, their terms are ending. One you're going to be considering today, and we do know that we're going to be recruiting a new board member for the second one. Kingsley Batshue is the board member that's rolling off the board, and he has a lot on his plate right now, and we really thank him for his service to the board during his term. And we're looking forward to filling that one. And then just a couple of updates for next week. At our last meeting, last Board of Health meeting, the board approved updating our isolation and quarantine ordinance, so that will be coming to you all for approval as well, hopefully next week. And then they also approved the wayfinding signage at the Pinecrest Building, which will be coming to you again, hopefully next week. And then just kind of an update for you to participate in and/or any of the other departments that are interested, is we have staff meetings every other month. And at our staff meeting on Friday, we are going to be having a short, little cultural competency presentation from Representative at Monsoon, Iowa. They serve Asian and Pacific Islander populations, and we know that that's a population that we have a significant presence here in Blackhawk County and that we continue to serve. So if anyone's interested in joining that, we can arrange it. Any questions for me?
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other updates? Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Amanda Fezremire, Human Resources Director. So I have a couple updates as well. First, just want to remind everyone that we have the professional development training next Monday and Wednesdays to discover your strengths training. We have over 100 employees signed up, so, which is fantastic. I'm really proud of that. And so the assessment, you know, it was due yesterday, but you can continue to fill that out, and we're looking forward to a great showing from Blackhawk County workforce there for this professional development opportunity. We also have the countywide classification and compensation presentation. That study is going to be presented to the board next week, December 12th, during the regular board meeting. I was told it'd be about 20 to 30 minutes, so I may look to you as to if you want that at the beginning or if you want that at the end. But our committee for this study is meeting tomorrow at 3:00, just to have the kind of initial review of the presentation, to provide points of clarification, understanding, and other things that may be needed before it goes to the board next week. Again, that committee, those that serve on that include our board chair, Linda Leyland, Supervisor Dan Treoka, our auditor, Grant Beeter, Finance Director, Michelle Wiedner, Conservation Director, Mike Hendrickson, and then the HR team. And lastly, just wanted to share that Supervisor Chris Schwartz is opening his home for our holiday open house for employees on December 21st, beginning at 4:30 till about 8:00 p.m. So we've been sending out flyers and put a survey together to just kind of get an idea of, you know, how many would be able to attend. Really excited about this. We have a lot of elected officials and department heads co-sponsoring that will be in attendance and helping out with food and beverages. So I just want to thank Chris for the opportunity to do something for the holidays, to include employees and their families, so...
I'm excited.
Yeah.
Move on.
We're excited, too. Any questions at all in the updates? Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you, Chris.
Good morning, Board. Orlando Lovelace, Director of Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. And I apologize for my absence, but, you know, with gas prices, driving from Pinecrest to Courthouse. I just wanted to share a few things of what our staff has been doing. As you know, the month of November and the month of May are two of the busiest months of the year for us, and I just kind of wanted to just go over a few things here, as soon as I can get this working. All right, in a standpoint, and one of the things that I've been doing for the last four years, as you know, is identifying veterans throughout our straight, our outstanding county and city. We have done great things, but the one thing I have never done was to recognize the Sullivan Brothers. And in memorance of Pearl Harbor Day, which is December 7th coming up, and honoring those 2,400 veterans that perished due to the Japanese attack, and 1,178 that was injured, these Sullivan Brothers, that's the reason why they were called to service in that standpoint. It's unfortunate that they lost their lives defending our great country, but it reminds us that someone died for us and for the freedoms that we enjoy today. And so we take a minute to just honor the Sullivan Brothers. What a great thing it was for the convention center, the velling of the Sullivan Brothers, and the motto, "Stick Together," with the bridge lighting and the banners. We're moving forward. And then also to encourage some other veterans to participate in this year's Veterans Way banner applications. We have other cities now really getting involved. I see Cedar Rapids is bringing up banners in that standpoint. It was, I think it was 34 that was hung last year. They are down. I'm hoping that takes, if I can get my banner real soon. But the point of emphasis is that we would like to see a double in that number going forward for this year. They'll start hanging them Memorial Day, and it'll run through the summer. And we'd just like to see our county recognize the great things that some of our veterans that live within Blackhawk County has done in that standpoint. Another thing that we're doing in conjunction with Post 49 and also the Waterloo, I mean, American Legion, is we are going to take a, there was a donor, and he doesn't want to be identified, but he gave us $4,000 to purchase a bus, a charter bus, to go down to the Iowa Veteran Cemetery and participate in Reefs Across America. And so we are soliciting for about 56 volunteers, free ride down, free lunch, opportunity to lay a reef at one of our fallen veterans, and then to come back home. And we look forward to that in that standpoint. We also have Paul Smith from Lock Runel Home that's involved. And one of the unique things is, we recently had a veteran who ashes was given to our office, and we made arrangements to also escort those ashes down on the 16th of December. So not just laying reefs at our fallen, but we're also going to escort a veteran from Waterloo down to be intuned at the cemetery. One of the other things that's coming up is the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs have, with the 99 counties and all of us doing the same job, they wanted to poll and to get some statistical data back on how well we're doing. And so for the next six months, they're going to be asking our veterans as they come in the office, we're tasked with also providing this link so that they can go out and do a survey. And I think I can click on it, just not for sure. And this survey, well, it doesn't look like... And this survey, well, it doesn't look like it opened up for me in that standpoint. Let's see if I can get out of that, though. But it asks some polling questions about how well the job is doing, how long did you serve, what was the customer service like with that? And I'll see if I can get that sent to you guys in that standpoint. Our Operation Christmas is moving steadily. With Thanksgiving alone, we, we're going down in numbers. We want to be liberal in our giving because our revenue for donations are growing, and we're trying to do as much as we can to help veterans. But we gave 32 veterans Thanksgiving dinners, and then there was two turkey dinners that were donated that we were able to give out to veterans. And we did that in various donation funds from $50, $75, and $100, depending on the family size in that standpoint. But we're getting prepared for Operation Christmas, adopt a veteran and the facility care bags that we're going to be going out to various facilities in the area. We're going to be delivering those bags on the 14th of December. We're going to go a little earlier this year in that standpoint. There's a food drive out there that we're going to help support. Even though we have a pantry, we're going to support that. I'll share these slides. The Blackhawks are doing a salute to veterans night on December the 9th, and there's going to be various resources there for veterans, and we're looking to support that also. And then some of the things that happened in November, again, very busy, but we had a couple events. Commissioner Warner, she got a Quilt of Honor in that standpoint, and we had a couple of various functions at U&amp;I, at the grout. And then one thing I wanted to point out here is General Holtman is a World War II veteran who is 97 years old, still getting around, and we just want to continue to recognize that era of veteran. Also, we took part in the U&amp;I at the Festival Trees, Mercy Ones Festival Trees, and those students up there who are now going to put their life on the line by saying the oath of commitment in that standpoint. Some of the veterans helping veterans, some of our revenue that's been coming in, UAW gave us $4,000 for ramps. We had another $986 just donated to Christmas, and you could see the total coming in. Also, the Post-49 riders, they ended up giving us almost $2,000 in gift cards. And they also set aside, where they gave us $1,000 just to help four veteran families with utility bills. So the veterans don't get the actual monetary, but they, if they need utility assistance, we already have it prepaid for them in that standpoint. It's just another way of how we're starting to come together and work again with our local service organizations. And Post-49 has been one of our biggest advocates, so we take our hats off to them. And then some of the participations that we did, and when you look at this, and I won't share this, I won't belingrure this a long time, but you're going to notice that our commissioners are very busy in our community. And so again, I take my hat off to our commissioners because they do care, they're involved in a lot of the events that is going on. And I'll share these slides with you in a standpoint. But we were busy in November, and that's just a small snapshot of some of the things we were doing. And then in our production, if you notice that typically, we are doing more in the summer months than we are in the winter months. Winter months, things slow down. But if you look at our numbers for Sept, October, November, they're actually, are uptick. We don't know what the contributing factor to that is. We have been putting out ads through Waterloo Courier and radio stations to make people still aware of the PACT Act and all the benefits associated with it. And one of the other things we started tracking, which is in blue, is the incoming phone calls. And for the month of November, we took in 549 phone calls, just various questions in that thing. So we're just, again, trying to be analytical and trying to figure out how do we best serve our customers going forward. And you can see all the rest, and I'll share those with you. And then some of our, what I'm grateful to the Board Supervisors is from is the residual that you guys give us to help us with helping veterans. You can see, those are poor numbers. I'm going to tell you, those are poor numbers. Meaning what I'm saying is, we must be doing something right, because we're not seeing a lot of people coming in for relief in that standpoint. And it's not that Orlando's saying, hey, I won't help you, it's that maybe we are starting to help them in the right direction in that standpoint. And then lastly, just looking forward to the holidays and the best for each and every one of you, all of the veterans in that standpoint. Again, remember Pearl Harbor Day in that standpoint, the banners in that reflection. And again, I'm grateful for what we're doing in our, in our community, and I have to take my hat off to my staff for all the great things that they're doing in that standpoint. So just stand by to address any questions or concerns. Again, I'll be soliciting for gas money to get back to Pinecrest.
Good luck.
But I'm truly in a position that I think I belong in. I don't know how long I'll be doing this job, but I'm just grateful that you guys hired me to be in this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other updates from anyone in the room? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to do an update? Moving on, I guess we'll move on to the minutes approved for November 28th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, the minutes are approved. Item seven is the consent agenda. The following items are acted upon by a single resolution unless someone wishes to remove an item for discussion.
So moved. Second.
Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz, yes.
Treulka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Item eight, other business. Resolution that the taxes on submitted properties which have come into public ownership through community development efforts, public infrastructure improvement, and public purpose acquisition be abated, and to instruct the county treasurer to adjust her records accordingly pursuant to 427.2 and 445.63 of the Code of Iowa in the amount of $28,677.56.
So moved. Second.
Any questions for Linda? I see she's here. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Treulka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Item B, resolution that the professional services proposal from Panda Consulting in the amount of $19,000 to migrate/convert the county's GIS parcel data into a new industry standard format known as parcel fabric be approved, and for the chair to sign the resulting professional services agreement as recommended by Al U IT Director.
So moved. Second.
Morning, Board. Al U IT Director, I have with me.
Natalie Nunez, GIS Coordinator.
And as you've read, this is for the professional services to migrate all of our current parcel data to this new industry standard. Any questions we can help answer for you guys?
Well, I think, like I said, Natalie did such a great job explaining to me kind of what was part of the process and the procedure. If she wants to elaborate on that just a little bit to give us all some information on that, that'd be great.
Sure thing. So we are currently using an older software that will be phased out within the next year. They're no longer teaching it in schools either, so it's important that we start moving towards the upgraded version because the old ones will not be used anymore. This new software, we're already paying for. It's part of our enterprise agreement, so it's not, it doesn't make sense to keep paying for something separate. In addition, this new software has better procedures and quality assurance that we can check to make sure that step by step it is being just more, you know, easily better, easily for the rest of the departments and any public entities that want to use it, the data will be better quality.
And you did, like several people, I think you said, evaluated the program or the...
Absolutely. We have the IT department, the assessors and the auditors. We all got them together, asked them questions that, what they value, we need to ask these vendors, and if they have additional questions. We have been working with them over the last couple months, just collecting the questions they have and basically grilling our vendors. What do you have? What do you have to offer? If you don't have that solution, how do you plan on fixing this for us? Because we do need to make sure it integrates into different software. We have third-party software in addition that connects to this ArcMap and ArcPro that do need to work seamlessly. And the vendor we chose will be doing this the fastest, which is very valuable because, because different departments use this, if during that migration timeline, they won't be able to use it. So if it's more than a couple weeks, it kind of dominoes to the rest of the departments and even outside cities who use our data. So it's pretty imperative that we do it as soon as we can.
What is the timeline for the migration?
Right now, it is proposed for a week to two weeks.
And how does this interface with the, with the dashboard? I think you spoke to, I don't know, four or five months ago?
Absolutely, yeah. So when we transfer everything to Pro, we already have a portal connection already, and that portal will connect to the hub. So it just makes it all seamless.
Perfect.
Right now, I am manually updating every week the parcel data we have. So eventually, we can get that to be scripted and just automatically upload it.
That's great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
My question went immediately to ongoing costs, like as far as continuing, like licenses. But the $19,000 is really this, just for the migration only? And if there were assistance, I think you said too, they'd have it available on an hourly inbox of time, but...
Yes. And it is the migration training, and we do have testing prototypes. So they will let us, basically whatever we are not able to do in that one or two weeks, any parcel edits, splits, or anything like that, will be used as the real-world training examples in that prototype. And then from there, once everything is configured and properly working, integrating with other third-party softwares, then it will be pushed to the production phase.
Thank you. Any other questions for Al or for Natalie? And moved in second. Please answer as your name is called.
Treulka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Item C is a motion that the holiday schedule for Blackhawk County offices for 2024 be approved as listed.
So moved.
Oh, come on.
I know. I thought I'd try anyway. Is there a second?
Yes. Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing and a bid opening to be held at 9:05 AM on December 27th in Boardroom 201 of the courthouse to open bids for the proposed purchase of steel to be used in the construction of Project L-1803 Bigwoods Road Bridge, 9013180210.
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, did you want to comment?
Yeah, just a quick explanation of what this item is. As you know, the Code of Iowa limits the amount of money that, that counties, cities, we can spend on our own projects. You know, our goal is to let contracts for work. So this is for our bridge crew, our fiscal year '24, '25 bridge crew project that we will be doing ourselves. So we are letting the steel out for competitive bids so that our work, our labor, will be kept under that limit by the state and the DMT that we are reporting on. So this is simply setting a public hearing for December 27th. Will allow us to send out the specifications for that structural steel that we need.
Do you know just how long that statute has been placed, or has there been any attempts to change it?
I don't know how long it's been in effect. It's, I would say, at least 25 years. I've been here at least, been in place at least the 15 years I've been here. I believe the limit for calendar year, calendar year 2024, I think is $120,000 now. So we need to try and keep our work under that limit for a project.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E, motion that the reappointment of Dr. Adam Royce as the board physician to the Blackhawk County Board of Health for a three-year term be approved effective January 1, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Did you want to comment otherwise?
I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay. No, I think we feel very fortunate that we have him on and he's remaining, so that'd be great. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Caitlin. Item F, a motion that the appointment of Gabby DeWitt to the position of Marketing Coordinator effective January 8th, 2024, at an annual salary of $77,683.50.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hey, Gabby, I was going to say, did you want to speak at all? I saw you were online and able to join us, if not in person, but on Zoom. She may have had to get off. Looks like, no, I guess we just have to congratulate her again later. Thank you. Item G, motion to approve opening the Community Services Funding Application Portal on the county website to accept fiscal year '25 funding requests, close on December 31st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, please.
Just looking at the number of applications that we got this last year, I wonder if there isn't some value in identifying what we're looking for, articulating that, and then asking board members to evaluate each application based off of that agreed-upon criteria, so that we're, so that we're evaluating applications. It becomes difficult to evaluate all these at, what, $700,000 of requests this year, and recognize some of those are probably higher than average. But I don't know, it would seem to me if we open the application, if to open the application without having articulated goals for those dollars, makes it difficult for folks to apply. It just seems a little funky to me. But just wanted to, I guess, have that conversation amongst the board.
Now, do you mean like, like, as in focus areas? Like if housing was something we were identifying for the year, or do you mean for specific, I guess, points? I'm trying to think, I guess, of what you mean as far as articulating.
Yeah. So, so for instance, like with Experience Waterloo, we have hotel-motel grants. There is a set of criteria, you know, for us in particular, right, it's, it's positive economic impact, positive perception of Waterloo. I'm trying to think through exactly what those, those are. But they're articulated in the application, so when folks are completing that application, they're doing it and speaking to those points that they know we're evaluating all of the applications on. And then our board members go through and they score 1 to 10. We compile all of those and we create an average. I'm having a hard time trying to figure out how we whittle down to 100 or 118,000 even with, out of 700, 869,000, sorry.
No, we will, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be difficult. It always is. It is, even when it's a smaller number.
But it seems, it seems like if we had a little bit more process there, that we might be able, it would frankly be an easier, not easier, more equitable process if everyone knows the rules of engagement at the beginning versus just how, how we choose to award.
I'm not sure. I can see from Experience Waterloo standpoint, there being some very precise points that you want to look at from a tourism, from a, I think we had a very broad audience with all of, I mean, and maybe we wish to change that at some point. I think it was just a couple of years, we kind of came up with that list of public purposes. And Mike, you may want to speak to this, but I think as he listed those for us, it was kind of up to the board to determine what we wanted to look at, even in the types of projects. And we kind of left everything as is the entire list, which makes it even more difficult. But I, to your point, I understand probably trying to screen that in somewhat, but I also see the difficulty in all the needs that are out there and, and that each of us have very different perspectives. But I'm kind of open to more discussion on it, for sure. I just, the reason we were kind of opening is, we talked about it not probably a month ago, and really hadn't taken any official action. And I thought, we talked about getting this into our budget cycle again, so we would be able to kind of plan appropriately when we're during budget, where the amounts of requests we had or what we think is out there that we'd like to assist with. And so it was just kind of really getting this started. I realized even at the time, it was only opening it up for 30 days, but I thought we had a better turnout of, that we've ever had before. So I thought, if it, we got even to the end of the 31st, and we didn't think we had very many, or the number wasn't large enough, or it wasn't a broad section, we could extend that if we needed to. But, so that I thought of, but not at all the, I guess, I'm sure that would delay us a little bit more to the process, but.
I think, I think, I don't think that I really want to narrow the focus anymore from like the, the kind of list that, that has been provided. I do think, I mean, I think the problem that we're facing in this current one is... in this current one is, is we didn't allocate enough money to this. And so that's, you know, and it's obviously, and I don't want to budget, can't budget seven hundred thousand for this, obviously. But starting off, I think that it's good to have this process, you know, have the applications in by the end of the year, and then we kind of, we know what that number is and what the needs are that could help us guide what, how much of a priority that becomes in the budget. But...
I like the broad section that we have. I mean, we have kind of a different, a little bit larger cross-section than we've ever had before. I did like that because I thought it seemed like we were just kind of limited to the same ones over and over again, which I know they have needs every year as well. But maybe something for future, though, if not this one?
Yeah. Yeah, just wanted to bring it up as it was on the agenda. I could also see a scenario where it might make sense to limit, to cap the requests. We go all the way up to a hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Well, and I think we haven't done that intentionally almost because it was, some came with what their gap was. They wanted you to identify, here's what their gap was. But many recognize that we weren't going to be able to meet those gaps either. So yes, but we could certainly do that. I mean, that's still an item for discussion as well.
I do, while we're on the topic, for this, in this coming year's budget, I think we need to move the food bank funding into the, over into Colleen's budget. I think that it's, I think that the county has an obligation to, you know, have some commitment on addressing food insecurity every year. And the idea of having that, have to go for application every year and up against all these other priorities with the potential of maybe not being funded. I mean, we've funded the food bank every year that I've been here, but it raises that potential. And I think that that's such a core need with this community that I think we should make that change in this coming year's budget.
Something for discussion, for sure, because it has come up and we've kind of bounced it around a little bit and the differences between some of the services, but yet the need is there.
To that point, again, while we're sort of on the discussion, I recognize...
Sure, we are.
Thinking towards the following, or this upcoming budget process, I'm also intrigued what it looks like to have, if we're allowed to have various funds for community services, right? So if there's one specific towards economic development, or just economic development and education, right, just looking at some of the commonalities here, if there's a way for us so that when we're evaluating these, we're not taking Job Foundation versus, when it's competitive grants, it does become versus, right? So it's Job Foundation versus the food bank. That becomes, I think if we had funds dedicated to economic issues, right, whether it's economic development, economic literacy, that seems to make sense as a pool. Housing, as we just heard about, there's a couple of applications in here dealing with housing. I just think that there might be some ways to divvy those out and be a little bit more specific in saying what we're wanting to fund. The broad nature of this is just a little difficult to wrap the head around and try to create some airness, even outside of some of the larger, we've got a quarter million plus of capital expense. But there's, I think there's certainly some room for us to just refine the process a bit.
And you bring up a point that, like I said, I had asked Mike to take a look at the, we had some applications, obviously we needed to do another round or two of the presentations. And in looking through those last numbers, there were some of those that were capital requests. And so I asked Mike to take a look at the application process again, because while we were very clear, or felt we were very clear to say it's for services, 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 that apparently there were groups that didn't meet that qualification. And so there would be some that we would be having to notify that didn't qualify this year, as we had to do one other year. And so, Mike, if you want to speak to that at all, it was really just taking a look to make sure we're more clear going forward on that.
Yep. So the bottom line is, in the application, as Linda just said, it specifies that it's for services, but what it doesn't do is explicitly, in its wording, exclude capital and related expenditures. And so what I did yesterday after she and I spoke, is I proposed some language that I sent to Linda. I believe you've had a chance to look at it, I don't know. But it effectively limits it, or it says, it states that it's not for capital expenditures. And the language I proposed was under the service eligibility section, and I did a slight revision of that section. But then I stated, in addition to the existing language, "Services do not include capital improvements, capital acquisitions, or other capital expenditures. Examples of capital expenditures not eligible for community services funds include, but are not limited to, purchase, maintenance, repair, or renovation of buildings or land, and purchase, maintenance, repair, or refurbishments of vehicles, tools, appliances, furniture, fixtures, or other equipment." That was the language I came up with on my own. It's tough to ever say you're going to get it perfect, or that people don't submit an application to say, hey, we're going to try, you know, we're going to say, look, this new roof is essential for our services. The reason we don't want to be paying for that, though, is because it looks like you're paying for a roof. It doesn't look like you're paying for services.
And we have to do contracts for those services.
Exactly.
That we have to do now that we didn't have to do years ago.
Yep. That is correct.
And we talked about maybe, just to make certain it was clear even too, of including a copy or a sample of that agreement, so that people could at least refer to it or see that it is services, or something to try to help in that sense, but...
So we need to have that language. I'm assuming, once we open it, we need to have that language.
Added, unless anyone has a problem with that. We can make sure that you see it in black and white, but to just add that and get it up as soon as possible, since we're already looking at today's date. Does that work? Does that work for you too, Dan?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Tom? Is that fine for you as well?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, great. So I think we did have a motion in second, unless we won't have more discussion on anything. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item H, motion to approve the Urban County Coalition twenty twenty-four legislative priorities.
So moved.
Second.
I think the questions were answered correct. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item I, discussion, possible board action on the bus shelter, or the bus booth, we've been calling it. Rory is under the weather, and has been for a few days, but is willing to join today just to kind of get this going because it is somewhat weather-related and some things going. So Rory, did you want to start? Are you there, feeling okay? Are you texting him? Carol's in close contact with him usually, but I was gonna, he's been doing a lot of coughing.
It seems like we've been having some problems with Zoom. Gabby tried to respond, but it froze up on her.
Oh, did she? I mean, we can go ahead, Carol, if you think we can switch items as far as new discussion on Cedar Bend Humane Society, and then come back to that if you think. Maybe we'll get a response by then. All right, super. Okay, we'll just go ahead with the discussion on Cedar Bend Humane Society contract. Kristy Gardner's here today to kind of walk through, I think everyone's got a copy. I'm sorry, Tom, I'll need to get one sent to you too, but she did a great job one day kind of walking through some of the things she was proposing for us, and I thought it needed to be presented to all the board for questions and comments and thoughts. So thanks very much, and thanks very much for coming.
I have a copy of it.
Oh, super. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kristy Gardner. I'm the executive director at the Cedar Bend Humane Society. I've met with a couple of you over the last few months, just kind of talking about contract. And we kind of came to the conclusion that our contract was very outdated, like a lot of the language, you know, some of the services that we said we offer that we don't, some of the expectations from the county that are no longer in effect. So we kind of redid the whole entire contract. There's really not a lot of big changes. The changes that I, some of my recommendations are highlighted in yellow. Those probably are going to be the areas, if anybody has any questions. Just very quickly, I recommend that, you know, we do a three-day hold on animals instead of a five-day hold. I mean, obviously, we certainly can continue a five-day hold. I know all of the cities, like Waterloo, a lot of those just do three-day. Most of the time when people claim their animals, you know, it's usually within those seventy-two hours. That would just kind of reduce resources.
So you see that as a benefit, just to go to the three versus the five, as far as when you made that?
I see it as a benefit because, you know, those animals don't have to sit in holding for so long, you know, then we can kind of move them through the system. Obviously, you know, there's always controversy on that. You know, people say, well, if somebody's on vacation, or this or that, you know, then, you know, they miss getting their animal, that type of thing. But there's, it doesn't matter, we could hold the animal for months, and there's always going to be something that pops up. So usually, after those three days, the majority of our animals do get a go-up for adoption. So, you know, that doesn't mean that somebody still wouldn't have that opportunity to get their animal. But statistically, I would say ninety-nine percent of the people that redeem their animals come within seventy-two hours. So again, that doesn't have to be, but that would just kind of be my recommendation. The other thing that we kind of recommended is kind of a TNR program. We get a lot of cats from the county, and, you know, we don't, you know, it's kind of hard because, you know, we have a lot of people that say, you know, this is a stray cat, but, you know, how do you determine, is it their farm cat, is it a stray cat? You know, like what parameters do you put in there? So if we could do TNR, which means the county and the cities both have this in place. So if somebody brings in a stray cat, then it's at our expense, our veterinarian, if we decide the animal's healthy, of course, then we can spay-neuter it, vaccinate it, ear-tip it, and we can take it back and turn it loose back where it came from. I think that might kind of reduce, first of all, it's going to help reduce your population over time. Secondly, I think that's also going to reduce your people that are trying to use the system to get their barn cats fixed. You know, we do have a program that we offer to the community for low-cost spay-neuter for barn cats and such. So we do try to direct people in that, you know, if it's their own pet. But obviously, you know, how do you prove that when people come in and they're like, well, this is a stray cat? We do see kind of people over and over every year bringing in cats. So I think this might help that, because if they know that, as long as they're healthy, we're just going to fix it and put it back out there, you know, maybe they're not going to, you know, bring them in readily to us. So...
Are there a lot that come in that way, as far as numbers, or the numbers high?
I would say stray cats is your biggest, I mean, stray cats is your biggest number. We don't go out and pick up stray cats because we'd be running, I mean, you'd be paying us to run all over the countryside for stray cats. But if somebody has like a sick or injured cat, we will go out and get it. Or you guys do allow people to bring in cats from the county if they're a stray, which, you know, I do think we want to offer that because, you know, not everybody has barn cats. And there are people that dump cats out in the county, and, you know, they bring in that stray animal. So, but I think that would just kind of help, help reduce that. And how it works for the city is, again, we basically get say on which cats go back out and which don't. We rely on our veterinarian for that. If it's something that's sick or injured, we're not going to put it back out there. And we won't put anything back out there if it's, until it's spayed or neutered. We ear-tip it so that's, you can identify that cat from a distance, and we also give it a rabies vaccination. So wildlife, I did highlight that. You know, we do very, very little wildlife. We can keep that in the contract, but that was just a question that I kind of had, that, you know, do you want us to continue to pick up wildlife?
How many do you, I mean, what's the number of wildlife that you'd pick up in a year? Or how much does that impact?
Our wildlife is pretty, you know, we don't go out and pick up just like your sparrows and rabbits and stuff. It's like, if it's an injured coon, or something that could harm a person. But I think in fiscal twenty-three, I don't think we responded to any wildlife calls. So...
So Libby, in the contract, you're kind of saying it allows you to continue to do it if needed, but you haven't really had much need for it.
And that's kind of up to you guys. I mean, we, it doesn't matter to us. It's just kind of something, since we don't do it very often, you know, do you want us to still do that? So those are kind of the main changes. I did recommend you guys adding, I guess, going down the line. So incorporated city areas, those are just some questions that we may have to work through in the future. You know, we are here to cover any of your unincorporated areas. We find that a lot of your incorporated cities use us for their animals. We bill them separately, but where we kind of get into problems is, they'll get into a situation and they'll call the sheriff's department, which, I mean, I get it, they have to respond to that. But then the sheriff's department is stuck, like, what do we do with this animal? But then that city, your incorporated city's like, well, we're not, we're not paying for that, you know. So there are some blurred lines in there. Those are some of the complications that we have. I guess I don't know the answer to that sometimes. We try to respond to the sheriff, you know, if we can. But, you know, we do get a lot of animals that come in from those incorporated cities that, you know, a lot of the times, they're just like bill Blackhawk County, you know. And so we don't, we don't do that, obviously. But, you know, I guess I don't know the answer to that. But those are some of the complicat, that is one of the difficulties that we have with this contract. So dead animals, we took out picking up deer because we don't do that any longer. We did highlight owner surrenders because we don't, you know, we're there for stray animals, not owner surrenders. One question I had there, again, sometimes, like for an example, we'll have a case where somebody in the county, it's their own dog, it was aggressive, it went after somebody. They called the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department goes out there, they pick up the dog, they bring it to us. It has an owner, you know, they drop it off. Well, then that kind of gets stuck on your bill when it technically, that's an owner surrender. So I don't know if that's something we need to kind of work through and identify exactly how you guys want us to handle that. I mean, I know those services, again, you know, I mean, the sheriff has to respond to things like that. But then what do they do with the animals? You know, in our eyes, that's an owned animal, but if it's a dangerous situation, then, you know, do we take the animal? The cities pay us the owner surrender fee in cases like that, but we don't have anything that outlines that for the county. So we kind of recommended a five-year contract, just because we don't have a lot of changes. If we can kind of set our contract, we don't have a lot of changes. Otherwise, everything else kind of stayed the same. The pickup fee, we did raise to fifty dollars just because, just gas prices for us to go way out in the county and pick up something. And then we did recommend a pickup fee. The cities do this, and it works real well. This would help you, it's not a lot, but it would help you collect a little bit of money back. So if we get a stray animal in and an owner comes and claims it, like for the city, we charge, you know, our boarding fee, but we also charge like a twenty-five dollar pickup fee that goes back to the city. So, you know, that is something we could put into place. You know, it's very easy for us to collect at that point in time. You know, we do ask for like a two percent service fee just for paperwork, but you could range that anywhere from twenty-five to fifty dollars. Cedar Falls, I think, does twenty-five, Waterloo does fifty, fifty-five. So that is something that at least then every month, you know, anybody that redeems an animal, that money would come back to the county. So...
That's good.
Yeah. I mean, it helps a little bit, especially those animals that have an owner out there. It kind of puts that responsibility back on owners. So that's kind of all I have for changes, unless anybody has any specific questions.
We might have, I was gonna say, I know, I don't know if we will have later, or if somebody wants to take a look. We just put it on for discussion today, really, for just to present, make some notes of those, of those points.
I have a couple of questions, Linda.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
I've had some concerns with the contract over the years, because I was the one that was working on it most of the time. We pay roughly, how much a month, twenty-four hundred plus? Kristy?
I was gonna say, a question for Michelle or Kristy, one of the two.
It's, you pay, yep, twenty-three hundred. Yeah. Yep.
Yeah. And if you look at the monthly bills, we have two or three on there. If you do the math, it's pretty expensive per animal. Couple other concerns I have was, one, we've got three or four individuals throughout the county that, they're snowbirds. Throughout the summer, they collect cats, and they turn the cats in anywhere from ten to twelve at a time, and the county gets charged for those. There's one on Independence Avenue in the county limits that does that. And there's one on Weeden Road that... There's one on Independence Avenue in the county limits that does that, and there's one on Wheaton Road that also does that. So, when they turn them all in, we get charged for every one of them. Also, you close, what, at 5 o'clock?
Yes.
Then our sheriff deputies has to pick them up, take them to the center out there, and I believe they have to cage them up out there, is that correct?
We have a, we have a room in the back of our facility for the police department and sheriff's department to drop off any stray animals after hours, correct?
And then we get charged for that, correct?
You don't, so you don't get charged a pickup fee? You just get charged your basic fee that you pay us to have the facility, you know, the people to hold the animals, that type of thing. The only time we pay you the pickup fee is if we go out and pick up the animal, so.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but the reason I brought that one up was I had comments and questions from the sheriff's department on this, that they had to do everything after 5, drive out there, put the animal away, lock it up and everything, and then the county gets charged for it, for the animal to be there, so. Those are some of the concerns that I've had over the years. Iowa Code doesn't call for any county to have animal services. I know over the years Waterloo and Cedar Falls have restructured their contracts, because they were too much, and, but if you look at the monthly bill, I believe we're only getting two or three, four animals at best. And a lot of times I looked at the bill, and we were being charged for other municipalities. And a good example is Raymond. The sheriff has a contract for policing duties only, that has nothing to do with animal control, so. A couple times we had to have that removed from the bills, so. It's just concerns I've had over the years, that I think we're paying too much, and I think that cost should come down considerably for what we use it for.
And I, like, as far as the, like, the, Tom, you're, like, Raymond, those are some of our concerns also, like, that's kind of why I put that in there, because like, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, like, you, we don't contract for those animals, but then the sheriff goes out there, they, they pick them up, and they bring them to us and say, you know, this is a Blackhawk County, you know, animal. So, you know, those are some of the, and I don't know what the answer is to that. I think we have to either clarify something in the contract, make sure that the sheriff's department's aware, because I think sometimes, you know, they get in a situation, they're not aware, you know, of that. So, I mean, I do agree with you on that. As far as the cats that people bring in, I guess I don't know what the answer is to that, you know. For us, it's kind of like, how do you prove those are their animals, you know? We don't ever take an animal in charge, I mean, that doesn't go on the city bill, any animal that somebody comes in and says, this is my animal, I want to surrender it, that's a completely different service that we have, and owners have to pay for that themselves. But when you have somebody that comes in and says, hey, I have these cats that showed up on my doorstep, you know, they're not mine, and they bring them in as a stray, you know, like, where do we go with that? It's like, you know, so you tell one person that, yep, we'll take yours, but you brought in strays before, no, we don't. You know, so we would have to kind of clarify how we would handle that. I don't disagree with you, I just don't know, you know, where that line is, is, you know, how do you tell one person that, no, it's not a stray, and another it is? And as far as your fee goes, so kind of keep in mind, you know, you're also paying not for the animals that we go pick up, but you're paying for the animals that people bring to us, and we don't charge you per animal. We, your fee is to handle whatever comes in through the county for the year. So like, I think in fiscal 2023, we handled like, I don't remember, I'd have to look, it's like 175 animals. So like, if you divide that with what you pay us, you know, that's like $190 an animal. We hold it for five days, you know, you're looking at, you know, like the cities, we charge them between $18 to $20 a day to hold their animals. So we hold that animal for five days, we have to have the facility, we have to have it insured to be able to do that. I have to have a license to hold those, I have to have staff to take care of them, food. So that's what you're paying for, that monthly bill is what you're paying for. We only charge you an additional $50 if we, excuse me, go pick it up. Otherwise, it takes care of any animal that the police department brings in, the public brings in, for any animal that comes to us. So like that police department, they're picking it up, but we're still holding it. So it's no different as if a person brought it in, or, you know, the police department bring it in, or we bring it in. The only thing you're not being charged is that $50, because if the police department didn't go pick it up, we would have had to have gone and picked it up, and then that would have been an additional 50. So, if you kind of look at it that way, it's not that we're charging you per animal. You have a contract that says, we are available for you and the citizens of Blackhawk County to take in any strays and animal issues. That's what you pay us for annually, so. Anything above and beyond that, like, like I said, if we have to go out, we charge you a pickup fee, and that's just for us to go out and pick it up, that's what that $50 is. Does that, does that kind of clarify that, or make sense a little bit more?
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I know, I've had this with you many times over the years on that. I just feel that the cost that we're paying just doesn't benefit what we're getting for it, plus the concerns I had of the sheriff's department, the after-hours, where they have to do everything.
Sure, and, and you know, we can, we can extend our services, it's just, then it's going to cost you more, unfortunately, because like, for us to have somebody on call to respond, I mean, I guess I'd have to go back and look, but I don't think the sheriff brings that many in in a year. So for you to pay for us to have somebody on call to respond to those half a dozen calls throughout the year, I don't know if that would be financially feasible, you know, but to be completely honest with you, like, with what the contract is now, I couldn't, I couldn't pay somebody to be on call to respond to those. So it's not that we wouldn't do it, it's just, I don't know if that would be financially feasible for you.
And they, have there been any problems or issues with the sheriff's department dropping them off?
Not that I know of, I think the only issues that were the complication comes with the, which I get, the sheriff, where they get frustrated, and I completely understand, is, is, you know, where we get into a situation where, you know, they get called, and, you know, they get called and they say that, okay, this is an owner surrender animal, and it's a bite case, and, you know, we want you guys to hold it. Well, you guys don't contract us to hold owner surrender bite, you know, cases. So, I get it, the sheriff's department's frustrated, because now they have this dog, what are they going to do with it? You know, and it's not that we don't want to take it, but we're like, well, we don't get paid from the owner, we don't get paid from you guys, so, you know, so those are some of the complications that we, you know, come into. And if that is something you would want us to just be part of the contract, we definitely could do that. I mean, obviously, you're not being charged more for more animals coming in, because we don't charge you per animal. We do charge you for bite cases if we have to hold them and quarantine them, but other than that, we don't charge you, you know, if you bring us 200 animals, opposed to if you bring us five animals, you know, you are charged the same amount, you know, you're paying for the facility, for us to be there, for the kennels, for, you know, everything that goes along with that, so.
And I did, just as a side note, I guess, follow up with Mark Herbst, with the sheriff's department, too, because there'd been some over-the-years questions about the services and everything, too, and he said that there weren't any issues or concerns as far as working with Cedar Bend at all now, and the fact that you probably couldn't get a better service anywhere else for the cost we were getting, because, for that reason, that it's just, there's nothing else out there doing the service that we need, and.
And they've been, I mean, they've been good to work with, I just think the few things we've had over the years, it's really not their fault, it's really not our fault, it's just kind of like the loophole in the system, and, you know, and you get your incorporated cities, and, you know, they don't have animal control services for their cities. I think in the past, they've kind of relied on Blackhawk County, which, you know, really, your services only, our contract only covers the unincorporated areas, so. We have kind of worked with a few of those cities over the last few years to actually get a separate contract with them, and the ones that are willing to do that, that has actually helped, because then they already know that, you know, hey, we have a contract in place, you know, for that, so.
Good to know, it might be nice to know who those are, I mean, the communities that have considered doing that and stuff. Well, is there any other questions for Kristi? I was going to say, otherwise, it was just to kind of get the information in front of us and hear for proposed changes, and then take a look at it, and have Mike take a look at it as well from the contract standpoint, and see, and put something on the agenda.
Just one last question on the trap-neuter-release. It's my understanding that one of the benefits is that if there's like a colony of feral cats, that if you trap-neuter-release them, it's not going to just be replaced by another colony.
Yeah, I mean, I could talk for hours on trap-neuter and release, so, but, I mean, there's a lot of statistics behind that. You know, a lot of times people are upset, because they're like, well, we don't, you know, think, we want you to put those stray cats out here, but the reality is they're already there, and so you trap them, you remove them, and they're just, you know, nature has a wondrous way of replacing, you know, what is removed. So, we have found that, yes, if you spay-neuter them, so they can't keep reproducing, vaccinate them, put them back out there, then, you know, you're not going to, eventually, sometimes they'll even die out, you know, you're not going to continue to keep growing and growing. And then those people that Tom is referring to, that might kind of alleviate some of that also, because if he's talking like snowbirds that just want them gone, if the county says, well, we do have this in place, which basically gives us the right to, you know, put them back if we feel they're healthy cats, you know, they may, that may kind of alleviate that, too, because then they may not be every year going and getting new cats, or I suppose they don't get them, because a lot of those cats aren't tame when they come to us, so.
You tip their ears?
We tip their ears, we vaccinated for rabies, we tip their ears, and we spay or neuter them, so.
Right, so, so we would, I mean, when they tip their ears, it's just a slight, small little cut on the ear, right? And then they, so that people can ID that the cat's been altered. So then that, I mean, that would maybe help a little bit, too, to this point, if we see, because first, this person can see these cats have all been tipped, they're going to know that these cats have all been, you know, part of the trap-neuter-release program.
And even as a health issue, you know, like, you have a lot of cats out in your county, I'm sure, but like, the ones we put back would even have a rabies vaccination, so, you know, that, that alone, you know, obviously, we don't go back out and recatch them every year, but we give them a rabies vaccination that lasts one to three years, and so that kind of reduces some of that also. If we get something that's sick or injured, once it goes under anesthesia, if it's sick or injured and our vet sees that, then we euthanize it, so we're not putting animals that are compromised back out there, so. I mean, there's no perfect solution, the perfect solution is not to have, you know, cats out there to begin with, but you, that, it's, it is what it is, you know, and our cities have it, and, but I will say, within the city of Waterloo and Cedar Falls, when I look at our feral cat numbers that come in, they've reduced, like, if I do 200 spay-neuters and trap-neuter and release, like, my numbers maybe the next year will reduce by like 150. So like, over time, I see those problem areas kind of reducing. You know, the county, I don't know, I can't answer the statistics on that, because I think a lot of people have their own barn cats. But, you know, I also see a lot of people that, in your county, that take advantage of our services, of our low-cost spay-neuter services, that they bring their own barn cats in, because they want them back, they want them fixed. You know, I don't, that's why it's kind of hard to determine, you know, I don't disagree with Tom with that, but I don't know how to tell somebody when they're bringing us 20 cats that are pretty wild, you know, that it's like, well, those are yours, you can't bring them, you know, so, but if we could do the spay-neuter and tell people that the county has this, and we will take them, we'll fix them and put them back, maybe, maybe that would kind of reduce some of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming today.
Yep, thank you very much.
All right, we'll see if we're ready. Rory said his mic wasn't working earlier, we'll see if that is for discussion on possible board action on the bus shelter.
Good morning, board, can you hear me?
Hey, we sure can, thank you.
All right, well, sorry about that. Yeah, Rory Givin, Facilities Director. So this is a bus shelter, we've had communications with Met Trainset, as well as the city of Cedar Falls, and the city of Cedar Falls has been gracious enough to offer us this bus shelter. Previously, it was located on University prior to the roundabouts going in. So, what, what we're asking for is this bus shelter be placed over at the Pine Crest facility. There's currently a concrete pad with a bus bench located. Really feel that this would be a nice fit for that facility to serve the clients that are coming into, into the Pine Crest facility. We have had communications with the city of Waterloo, particularly their engineering department. They actually were the folks who headed up, pouring the existing pad that's there. They did indicate that this pad would accommodate this shelter, and we've been in contact with city of Cedar Falls, they've been kind enough to offer any services we might need to pick this shelter up, to get the shelter over to the Pine Crest facility. My staff then would be responsible for installing the shelter, which is a fairly simple task, and it appears to be in really good shape. So I guess my, my asking for the board today is to accept this shelter and to allow us to move forward with getting it over to the Pine Crest facility and getting it installed.
So Rory, there's little, little to no cost on our part, correct?
Little to no cost, the one thing I did want to mention, though, is from the communications with Waterloo, they did stress that, you know, we would be liable for any maintenance that would, might be needed down the road on this shelter house, so I did want to bring that up to the board, because that, you know, that would add to our responsibilities. I will tell you that the shelter house appears to be in very good condition. It is a glass shelter house, so there is the possibility that we could have some ongoing maintenance with this unit.
I've used that shelter, it's always an interesting experience to ride the bus. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
They moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close, same sign, great. Thank you all, thank you Rory, for, I knew, we've been trying to beat the weather on this, and seeing if this was something that the board wanted to do to get it done as quickly as possible with the weather. And Rory was too sick to really be here today, but thank you Rory.
We will get the wills in motion on this, and hopefully we can beat the weather, and I do think it'll be a good asset for that facility, so thank you.
Oh, yeah, great. It's kind of, it was just kind of one of those things that trickled around, the whole community kind of got engaged in it and was excited about it, so this is just kind of, I said, a kind of a nice Christmas kind of project, all these partners. Item number nine is, any reports or information from the board? Any, no?
Uh, just a really quick heads up, the rebrand survey with the three iterations, three types, went around to the board and the committee, so if you haven't already done so, please, it's a really quick urateum. It takes you less than 15 seconds.
Yeah, we'll sit in here.
Yep, yep.
Oh, great.
Yeah, but if folks haven't already done so, but hopefully we'll be able to get something narrowed down and crank through here, middle of December.
Now, will the committee meet again, or is the committee planning to meet?
Yep, Chris wanted, Corcoran created one to make sure that we had enough responses on that survey, so that he had something to present to the group, so likely at the end of next week, we'll work with staff to get that on the books.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports, information? Okay, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.